Today is Tuesday, the eighth day of October. Time is nine o'clock. The Board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Commissioner Daley and myself are present. Commissioner Davidson is currently absent. Would you like to get a roll? Could you give us a tell you who you are starting over here?
I'll give questions.
Jennifer Pike Gajar.
Kathy Portless Procurement.
Karen Brady Assessor's Office.
Tim Klein Treasurer's Office.
Josh Brown Operations.
Good morning Herb Cantu Lineville.
Oh good to Mr. Chuk Procurement. Robin Sweeney Procurement.
Evan Hamidin Procurement.
Melissa Allington Procurement.
Ken Sinclair Fleet Management.
Jan Bennetts Ada County Prosecutor.
Emily Lowe Prosecutor's Office.
Scott Danny Ada County Prosecutor's Office.
Elizabeth Duncan Communications.
Real ID guy.
Trent Tripleman Court.
Pop hurt the Ada County Prosecutor.
We must have some procurement on the agenda today.
We do.
Yeah, okay. Madam Clerk, can we change the agenda?
Yes, there is one change to the agenda.
Okay, I move that we change the agenda and add a second item under Romeo four. Special recognition.
Second motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye. It's added.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right. Well, let's see. We have a special recognition for, oh, it's from procurement. Okay. I will read the recognition and will. Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award from the National Procurement. You're gonna have to get a new trophy case on that.
Procure one.
Can you get a procurement? Get your procure one?
I don't think you're gonna talk any procurement into giving you that.
For the fourth year in a row, Ada County Procurement has been awarded the prestigious Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award from the National Procurement Institute. The AEP Award is earned by agencies that demonstrate a commitment to procurement excellence. This annual program recognizes procurement organizations that embrace innovation, professionalism, productivity, leadership, and e-procurement. The AEP program encourages the development of excellence as well as continued organizational improvement to earn the award annually. For 2024, there were 198 successful applicants, including 72 cities, 49 counties, 25 special districts, 23 school districts, 16 higher education agencies, and five state agencies. Ada County Procurement is the only government agency in Idaho to ever, ever win this award. Congratulations. Congratulations. Where is the award? Do you have it here?
It's right there.
Oh. Well, come over here and let's take a photo of it. Congratulations, everyone. Come on, get the whole crew up here. I'll hold it.
Go ahead.
Grant it. Here. Come on, let's get everybody up here. Raise it.
Cover you guys up.
Okay, well, why don't you get up here? Here. Let's get it. We want you in the picture for sure. Congratulations. We're proud of our procurement organization. They're gonna have to get a new trophy case.
Just a little bit more. Evan, I mean Evan, a little bit more. This real thing, great. One, two, three, thank you, and a big smile. Thanks.
Thank you again. There you go. Congratulations. Congratulations.
What does everybody else say when you all get real?
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is Ada County Prosecutor Attorney Jan Bennetts. You're here.
I'm here.
Okay, I've asked Mr. Daley to read the proclamation. We have a proclamation for you.
Oh my goodness.
The Board of County Commissioners, Ada County, State of Idaho, proclamation to designate the day of October 8th, 2024 as Jan Bennetts Day. Whereas county prosecuting attorneys in Idaho are responsible for enforcing Idaho's criminal laws and pursuing justice for all, and whereas Jan Bennetts started working for Ada County in 1994 as a deputy prosecutor in the magistrate division and was appointed as Ada County prosecutor following the retirement of the prosecutor who hired her, Greg Bauer. Whereas Jan was first elected prosecutor in 2016, and whereas Jan serves with integrity and believes we must do what is right even when what is right is most challenged, the most challenging path. And whereas the Ada County Prosecutor's Office, under Jan's leadership, seeks justice in the prosecution of criminal cases and provide exceptional civil legal advice and guidance to the Ada County elected officials and department heads, and whereas the residents of Ada County are blessed to have had Jan Bennetts serving with distinction for the last 30 years, and now therefore the Board of County Commissioners, Boise, Idaho, does hereby proclaim October 8th, 2024 as Jan Bennetts Day.
We'll have to adopt proclamation. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners adopt October 8th, 2024 as Jan Bennetts Day.
I second the motion.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Come over here, we got an award for you.
Oh my goodness.
Proclamation and award.
Wow, thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh yeah, thank you. We appreciate your loyal service here. If we can get a picture now.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Oh wow, look at that.
There you go. Jan Bennetts Day.
Thank you.
Everybody enjoy Jan Bennetts Day.
Thank you so much.
And we'd like to give you an Ada County flag.
I love it. Oh, thanks again.
Thank you.
Oh my gosh, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
It's such an honor. Thank you all. Wow. I'm going away. Thank you.
Well, we give everybody else a little plaque when they're 30 years. You get a flag. Thank you. Everybody enjoy Jan Bennetts Day.
Thank you.
Now, you be sure to tell your staff that today is Jan Bennetts Day. Okay. Is the procurement office here? Yeah, there you are. All right, we have some unfinished business. I'll accept the motion to remove some unfinished business from the table.
Remove that we remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have an award of bid number 24071.
Yes, go ahead. Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, under unfinished business today, we have the award of bid 24071, the ARPA Ada County Elections Office and Warehouse Remodel 2024. And the evaluation team has reviewed the bids received, and would like to submit this recommendation for award letter for your consideration.
Could you read the letter?
I'd be happy to. Letter dated October 8th, 2024, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners, from Ada County Procurement regarding bid 24071. Dear members of the Board, after reviewing the bids submitted, it is the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid 24071 to Barrier Building Incorporated as the lowest response of bidders with a total bid amount of $2,330,000.
Okay. Less, a little less than what the.
Fantastic.
Yeah, I think we thought it might come in around $4.3 million and can't consider way less, so.
Yeah, now let's figure out how to spend the rest of that money. Because it's our. Okay. Is there any questions or discussions? If not, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we award a bid 24071 to Banner Building Incorporated.
Barrier Building.
Barrier Building Incorporated in the amount of $2,330,000.
I'll second that.
Okay. You've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thanks, question.
You get your aim, oh. Okay. Moving on, I'll open the public hearing on resolution number 3023. Resolution number 42 for the return of unspent funds and closure of certain grants related to the American Rescue Plan Act. Is there any questions or issues? Oh, you have done. You wanna tell us about this?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's pretty straightforward. We are closing five awards. One expired, and four were completed under budget. So, thank you to our operations and project teams for killing it in that regards. So, the total return of funds that will go back into our fund balance for the grant is $112,980 and 30 horsemen's.
Great. Any other discussion on this resolution? Or many? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution 3023 and call for a motion.
I move that we adopt resolution number 3023 as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just, those last two are examples of how well our staff does their work.
Well, there's no question about that. Combination of the, with the Elections Office, a combination of excellent stat work. Thank you very much, Josh. And the market plays for construction. We got more bidders than we thought we'd get.
We got 10 on that last one.
Yeah. When we open it up, the park at.
It's Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Right here. Good. Okay, good enough. All right. Moving on, we have Operation Change Order Number 14. Ada County Coroner's Office Replacement Facility Project, decrease of $11,598. Any questions or issues on this? It's nice to decrease the amount of money we're spending.
Right.
Any, this closes out this contract, correct?
Closes it out. That is correct.
All right. Any questions or discussions on this change order number 14? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve change order number 14 to agreement number 14570.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Well, hey, procurement's still here. Okay, opening a bid number 25002, Expo Idaho Parking Lot Pavement Restoration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Ada County Procurement received four responses for bid 25002, the Expo Idaho Parking Lot Pavement Restoration FY25. And Evan has our bonfire and procurement system all keyed up. If you're ready for us to open.
We're ready.
All right.
You ever want to bring a box in just for old times' sake?
And box cutters and potential like cutters, paper cutters. I like the equipment system.
That's right. Just the people. That used to be how you had to open the bits up.
There was.
Bring a box in, open them up.
Yes. The secret system is one of those reasons why we got that award.
Yeah, well, that's good.
So, just a little bit about this project before Evan opens up our spreadsheet. This project is to contract with the contractor to provide all materials and labor for the restoration of the pavement in the Expo Idaho Lodge Triangle Parking Lot.
Well, good.
And Mr. Chairman, today we'll be looking for the name of the bidder and the total bid amount, which will be the base bid plus the $520,000 owner's contingency. And we have the four bidders up there. And the first bidder is Capital Paving Company Incorporated, and they have a total bid amount Bidder number two is Night River Corporation, and they have a total bid amount of $2,192,000. Bidder number three is Sunny Ridge Construction LLC, and they have a total bid amount of $2,260,195. And then bidder number four is Sunrock Corporation with a total bid amount of $2,120,870. And those are our four bidders.
That's close. Those are real close. Those are pretty tight on that one.
So, you can tell that they had a pretty good understanding of that project being that close.
Sharpened their pencils on that one.
They did. So, we'd like to request this be tabled for award to the October 15th, 2024 Open Business Meeting.
Great. I'll accept the motion to table this till October 15th Open Business Meeting.
I'll move to table the final rankings and request to answer free negotiations for RFQ.
Mr. Chairman. Sorry. This will be just for table for award.
For award. Till the 10:15.
I'll move to table the award of bid number 25002 to October 15th, 2024.
Yes. I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Moving on to alcohol. Okay, alcohol, license and catering permits. Andy Quett, there's two. Apparently one.
One of each.
One catering and one licensed transfer. Any questions or issues about those? Not, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the one catering permit and the one licensed transfer as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Hey, you heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Okay, we have with us today our distinguished clerk, Mr. Trent Triple. He's got a big report for him, I'm sure.
He doesn't have anything going on.
We do have year end closeout in our auditor's office. We've got about another week. End of this week is really where we're targeting that year end closeout. The new budget's been opened up, and so far, so good. No major hiccups. We also have this little tiny election coming up in a couple of weeks. To date, 53,000 absentee ballots have been requested. We're averaging about 1,500 per day, as you can tell.
You might get to that 60,000 level. Yeah, you might.
Four more weeks of that, and we will definitely hit 60,000. So far, we received back 11,000. That's about a 20% return rate, and that's on par with our normal return rate about this time.
That's about what it is this far in advance.
24,000 of those are Republican, 14,000 Democrats, and 14,000 unaffiliated requests in the absentees. So, you can see it's kind of all over the map there. Registration cutoff's important date, 11 October, so this Friday, the pre-registration cutoff. Now, of course, voters can register in person.
That's for the election day.
For in-person, early voting and Election Day. They can still do that. The 15th of October, we are up and running with in-person voting. Five locations, Meridian, Boise, and Kuna City Halls, Ada County Elections, Eagle Library, and Bound Crossing. Those are all permanent in-person early voting sites that will be running from 8:00 to 5:00 Monday through Friday, except next Tuesday because of the holiday. We're starting on Tuesday, so that'll be the first day. We will also have the mobile voting unit at Rocky Mountain High School for that first day on that Tuesday as well, and that's running from 10:00 to 5:00.
Is that for teachers and stuff? And most of them aren't eligible to vote at high school.
They're 18-year-olds.
What's up, mom, right, Dean?
Yeah, it's not, it's not for students. It was per, it was per the request from West Ada School District. They went into an in-service teacher day on Election Day, which greatly benefited us, and.
There'll be a lot of people. Because we can use the school.
Yes.
That's how we've opened up several schools for our precincts. Great.
How many people usually vote that, or in those 15 places?
We usually get about 15 to 20% of our registered voters take advantage of in-person early voting. So, it's, it does, the purpose of that is to alleviate long lines on Election Day so that people don't have to wait for hours on Election Day to be able to vote. And it's been successful so far that I've seen in the last several elections, including the presidential. So, hopefully, we can accomplish that same thing in people on Election Day, which is still the primary means of voting for everyone in Ada County. About 60, 70% will vote on Election Day, and if we reduce those lines, they can get through quickly with the amount of precincts that we have too. So, that's been very beneficial, so.
Well, let's just hope we can keep the election simple.
It will be simple whether or not.
I don't mean this time, I mean next time. We know it can be simple this time.
Whether or not people perceive it as being simple is another thing. I can't control that.
Oh, it is, it is fairly simple, but.
Yeah.
Just imagine if you have 70 or 80 bubbles to fill in.
Yeah, that's true. That'll be a different, different animal.
Well, so hopefully, we don't have that mess.
Yeah. Anyways, that's my report. Any questions for me?
Any questions? Okay, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have the Claims Journal, the authorized payment of claims. Is there any question or discussion on the Claims Journal? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to authorize payment of the claims on the Claims Journal dated October 4th, 2024.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have personnel actions. Any questions or discussion on any of the personnel actions? Not, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we have Assessor's Office. Anyone hear from the assessor? Oh, here we are. There we go.
Good morning. I'm filling in for Rebecca and Brad today. Not much to report. We have BTA appeal hearing starting next week.
Exciting.
Exciting, yes. We have several scheduled in the next three weeks, and I'm sure the rest of them will follow in quick succession. We are also about halfway through our statutory reappraisal process, and we're on track to finish by our internal deadline of December 31st.
How many, how many will we actually reappraise?
If I call correctly, it's about 47,000 parcels, so.
So, we're, we're up to about 23,500 then?
Yes.
We're in that range.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't inspected 23,500, but typically we.
Then I'll perform it, yeah.
Yeah, we do our desk reviews first, and then we do field inspection. So, we're on track to finish. Other than that, it's pretty quick.
Oh, okay. And we have a couple of tax cancellations, which are merely adjustments, not just cancellations.
Correct. These are, these are homestead exemption provisions, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a question. Ada County Highway District.
Yes.
Why are they on the list?
That is a parcel that ACHD purchased up on Federal Way, I believe, went from taxable ownership to exempt ownership, I believe. That's the reason.
That's not the one with palm trees?
I, you know what? I looked, I don't know where they live. What's the one with the palm trees? I'm curious.
It's off Correal, that, it's off Correal.
Oh, got it, got it.
And they were, I don't know about palm trees, but that's what the news report said. So, you can't really trust it fully.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions? All right, well, I will accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the tax cancellations as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of me.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any questions or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, now we have the Treasurer's Office. Well, here we are. There he is.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the Treasurer's Office, well, each year around this time, or exactly during this time for the fiscal year end or beginning around the fiscal year, we do some pretty comprehensive reporting that we submit to our internal auditors in preparation for also our external auditors. And so, we've been working ever since the beginning of October, October 1st, on our reporting. That's been our primary focus, and that'll start to slow down here as we finish those reports, our final bank recons. One of the other reports that we submit is our, is our monthly investment report, which normally I'd be doing today, but we'll be preparing that now and when we'll be here next week to review our final fiscal year-end totals. Other than that, we've also been preparing for, even though our tax bills don't come out till November, the process starts well before that, and we're working diligently with the, with the Assessor's Office, with home recovery reporting, with, with the clerk's office on the levy rates and putting them into the system and all the preparation that goes into that. So, that's pretty much what we've been busy with lately as far as updates.
Well, great.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So, is the state going to get us, because there's going to be some property tax relief, again, not very much, but are they going to get us that earlier than they did last year? They streamline their process of that?
You know, I believe so. You know, last year, we had to wait until near the end of October, and we were waiting on the levies to get calculated, which they in turn are dependent on all the other counties, and every single one of them have to be correct. And so, this time, we have a lump sum that we're getting, and we'll be calculating the levy internally ourselves. So, it should be a little more streamlined this time than it was last.
Yeah, could they change, the legislature change that, right?
Great. All right. So, in getting your final reports, is this new Oracle system working great?
Well, it's working just fine. It's different. It's different for us.
If you're used to it.
Yeah, so last year, each year when we prepare these year-end reports, we look at last year's and then we replicate that. And so, a lot of the reporting is the same, especially with our internal Sempro system, which is our investment software. However, we balanced it to Fab last year, and this year, we're balancing it to Oracle. So, the reports are different, they look a little different, and so, we're working through that, and we're getting the same necessary data, it just looks a little different this year.
Okay. Well, at least it's not Luma. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
Is the state getting that, getting semblance of order in that Luma thing, or?
We do hear little tidbits of information occasionally, but we don't work with anybody directly that does the Luma reporting that we're depending on in any way, so.
The State Treasurer's Office has to use a lot of money. We have a lot of money with them.
So, so I'm glad you brought that up, though, because the State Treasurer's investment reporting software hasn't been affected. We still get the data that we need from them seamlessly, just like we did prior.
Well, good. We're happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have approval of minutes. I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. I'll in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we have, uh, one interim event at Expo Idaho. The Weightlifting and National Championships. Oh, anybody scheduled to do that?
Yeah, who's come, who's competing?
Guess not. Cameras not even gonna be competing and give them a trophy.
Somebody else can get that award.
Okay, um, I'll accept a motion on that.
I'll move to approve the, uh, agreements as identified on the agenda for Expo Idaho, Western Idaho Fair, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. I'll in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, uh, then we have, uh, Barbara Park Education Event Center. We have four, four agreements, four events. Get, uh. Is there any, uh, question or issues on any of these events? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Barbara Park Education Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. I'll in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have fifty-four agreements to, uh, approve and the, the lion's share of these agreements are renewal agreements. Is there any question or issues with any of these agreements?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A couple of them. Okay, notice number four is, uh, professional services between New County and Lake Dade, Dennisburg, uh, J.R.
Yeah.
I know him, but, uh, I.
Let's still be going.
He's relevant.
Oh, oh, okay. I don't know him. I'll still be going too. Any other questions or issues?
Mr. Chair, I see we got, uh, the renewal for the, uh, the Hawk Pros at, at the landfill. So if you're here, maybe you can talk about the, the Hawk program.
Sure can. Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Uh, agreement number one, five, six, four, two, dash, one, dash, twenty-four is, uh, renewal for the vendor services of Hawk Pros to facilitate the mitigation of the goals at the landfill site. Uh, the program's been very effective, so we'd like to renew that contract to help us, uh, maintain order with the goals. It's been very effective.
Been better than all the other methods we've tried.
Yes, that is correct, yes.
So the natural way seems to be the best way.
It, it is, and, and quite honestly, the, the vendor has been very diligent about protecting the goals as much as possible, mitigating, minimizing any potential harm to the, the goals and just ultimately scaring them away.
Well, we hate to hurt them. So, so what do they do? Just wrestle them to the ground and say, don't come back?
So what the goals are, uh, what the Hawks are able to do is they will barter with their owners or caretakers. Uh, they have fresh meat in their hands. And so when the Hawk attacks the goals, it keeps it, uh, to the ground. Essentially, the owners of the Hawks will show them some meat and then they release the goal and then go back to their owner.
So they do wrestle them to the ground.
Very effective. So if you're interested in getting a, a firsthand exposure to that, we're more than welcome, more than happy to help accommodate that.
That would be interesting. They'd run out to the birds of prey and watch the.
Yes.
Watch the watching out there, that would be.
Well, that's good. I'm glad we're keeping the gulls from, uh, pooping on our equipment.
Yes. Very cynic, so.
Yes.
So tho- those birds are going to be in the weightlifting championship?
That would be, that is an option.
If they're, if they're wrestling those gulls to the ground, they might need a little exercise.
They're very strong, those claws. I'll tell you that, those talons, I should say.
Yeah, well, good. Okay, is there any, uh, other questions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there any question?
Mr. Commissioner, I'm fifteen, if I might, uh.
Do you mind?
Calling out the Helion is our current recording software company. We're transitioning to Tyler. That was a contract that was awarded last year. Um, but because of the contract timeline, this renewal amendment is just to go to month-to-month with them. And so when we get the new computer software company up and running and the implementation is complete, we'll, we'll cancel this agreement. But we need to keep it going month-to-month until we get that up and running, so.
I thought there was a rationale for going month-to-month?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, thanks, thanks for, thanks for giving us that up. Any other, uh, questions or?
Another notable one we have is, uh, renewing the use for the Women and Children's Alliance.
Yes.
Number fifty-two. Uh, number fifty-two, uh, is, uh, an S for the Ada County Victim Services Center.
Yep, and that's great. We're, uh, we're real pleased with, uh, with, uh, what's happening at the Ada County Victim Services Center. And the addition of the Women's and Children's Alliance is, uh, one of the, uh, reasons we're real happy for it, because our partnerships are, are going well at that center. Any other questions?
Uh, another question, just another note. Number two is, uh, an agreement between the sheriff to use, to let the ATF use the sheriff's training center. So the cooperation we have with the federal authorities to do some of the things they have to do in terms of drug addiction, uh, uh, interdiction and that sort of thing.
And, and just another note, there are like over half, like thirty, thirty-two of the fifty-four are renewed.
Well, yeah, well, yeah, yep. All right.
You might want to mention, uh, number fifty, which is, uh, related to ERAP. What we're doing with that one.
Yes, we're changing that a little bit. Uh, we had some money left, uh, actually the, the regulations allowed us to use twenty-five percent of ERAP two. And, uh, because of, uh, micron technologies getting a lot of the, uh, private activity volume cap for the state of Idaho, we had to extend this because they have to apply for the four percent. The East is giving the four percent from Idaho Housing and Finance Association. Well, now they have to apply for it for a competitive grant, the developer that's building that apartment, I'll play. That's what this is about. Any other questions?
Just another note, some, a couple of these are the prosecutor's office, since we gave the prosecutor an award today for.
Yes, sure does.
Well, that's why, that's why today is, is Jan Bennett's day.
With the, with the cities, the, the cities are looking at prosecutors. That's another one of the, you know, a couple of the renewal agreements.
And we should note, uh, to our clerk that when you're here thirty years, we'll give you an award too. We won't be here, but. Well, maybe try and triple that.
I won't be here either.
Oh, oh, okay. All right. That, yeah, that, and that's good. Any other questions or discussion?
Well, just point out number twenty-four, that, uh, our new drug court building, that, uh, it was large enough that we're actually able to lease some space to the Department of Corrections, so. It's a, a li- little bit of revenue back to the county.
Uh, yes, and, uh, we should note, and we're, we're, we will soon have a ribbon cutting or a grand opening because the, the, uh, the, uh, treatment center. Uh, for the drug court has been moved and that's one of the reasons that we, that we are able to remodel the, uh, elections offices. Because they're getting all kinds of new space out there. And, uh, and now we have twice the room for the, uh, for the treatment center, which we're really happy about. Cause that helps, helps a lot of people and we're hav- and if nobody's ever attended the gra- uh, the drug court graduate ways, you want to put it on your agenda and go. You'll see lives changed.
Very worthwhile.
So, yeah, that's a good one. Thanks. Anything else?
Number eight, care wellness center, back to what you were just saying, sorry, the drug court, but that's, that's another one of the adult, uh, wellness helps that we're giving to the adults in the county.
It is.
That is, it is very, and they have a thing over at the park, remember?
They do. We went to that last year. Great.
People are open, they're, they're.
Again, that changes lives and, and that's what we like to see, to see is, is, is when the people can improve their lives and become a productive member of society. Well, great. Any other questions or issues? Thanks for pointing out that some of the fine points of all these fifty-four agreements.
Sometimes we, we need to, I should have noted, these, these are positive agreements. We don't just.
Well, add that we actually know what they are. Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the agreements as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the property documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. I'll in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next up we have, uh, Weekly Indigent Items. Any questions or discussion on Weekly Indigent Items? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I must accept the recommendations of the Indian Services Staff as listed on the summary of cases dated, uh, October eighth. And authorize the chair to sign the, twenty-four, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. I'll in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any other business needs to be brought before the board? None from the pyramid? That's it? Okay. Thank you. We'll be, we'll be adjourned. Thank you.
So you didn't get another award?
Well, good morning. Today is the, uh, eighth day of October. The time is nine forty-two, forty-three. Uh, the Board of Commissioners is, is in session, standing as the Board of County Emergency Medical Services District for its weekly open business meeting. Uh, all three commissioners are present. Um, we also have with us.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
And real IT guy.
Yes, I know the bridge.
Yeah, Anne's here, yeah. Oh, there's Sean. Yeah, I can just barely sit in here.
No.
Well, good morning, Sean. We have Sean on the bridge here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just getting over a cold, so I thought I would spare you guys my hacking and coughing in the room.
Oh, well, you can wear a mask. That's fine. All right, well, good. Well, we're, we're glad you're here and we're glad you're getting over your cold. All right, uh, are there any, uh, changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
No changes to the agenda. All right, moving on, we'll take the, uh, uh, Claims Journal. I'll accept a motion on the Claims Journal.
I move that we approve the Claims, uh, Journal as listed, EMS Claims Journal for October fourth, twenty twenty-four. And authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. All right, you've heard the motion. I'll in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have the approval of minutes. I'll accept a motion on the minutes.
Uh, I'll move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. I'll in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, now we have ten agreements and, uh, most of these agreements are renewals. Uh, is there any question or any issue on any of the ten agreements?
Sure. Go ahead. How about you talk about, uh, number C? It's a memorandum of understanding between Ada County and Ada County Emergency Medical Services District for Community Paramedic Service Pet Program.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, that has nothing to do with animals. The P stands for Psychiatric Emergency Team. And so our, our community paramedics actually respond out on, um, mental health, uh, behavior calls. Uh, and try to divert the patient from the emergency department directly to a psych facility. Uh, and they do that in cooperation with law enforcement and, um, the mental health providers. So that's a, a service we've been providing for quite a while. Uh, and I know at one point, uh, we, uh, were saving indigent money by doing that, so. It's that agreement.
Okay, so it sounds like it's been a successful program.
Been a very successful program.
All right, any other questions or issues on any of the ten agreements?
Well, we have another one for, uh, mutual aid agreement with, uh, Ada and Canyon County Ambulance District. Tell us about how that, uh, relationship works.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, uh, this is a longstanding agreement we've had with Canyon County. Uh, and basically what it says is that, uh, we're not obligated, but if they request that we come across the border or we request they come across the border, we'll do our best to do that. And we have, uh, on occasion, you know, Canyon County actually came over to the structure collapse out of the air. And we have responded into Canyon County. We've looked at the data since they've been kind of struggling over there and we haven't gone to Canyon very often, so they're, they're holding around over there, but. Something that we keep an eye on.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, that, that's what I was going to ask, since they had their, uh.